Mr. Niskuna zoning Board of Appeals, Ms. Chiketti, will you go and call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif.
Here.
Mr. Dolman.
Present.
Ms. Pacheco.
Here.
Mr. Gentile.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Antonakowski.
Here.
Chairperson Hoak.
Here. The first matter on the agenda is the review of the July 19, 2023 minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Having heard none, is anyone interested in making a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
The motion being, having been made and seconded, Ms. Chiketti, will you go ahead and call the vote for the July 19, 2023 minutes?
Mr. Latif.
Stand.
Mr. Dolman.
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco.
Yes.
Mr. Gentile.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski.
Abstain.
Chairperson Hoak.
Yes. That the minutes of the July 19, 2023 meeting have been approved. The next matter on the agenda is the review of the August 16, 2023 minutes. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Having heard none, is there anyone who would be interested in making a motion to approve the August 16, 2023 minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion being made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, Ms. Chiketti, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Mr. Latif.
Yes.
Mr. Dolman.
Abstain.
Ms. Pacheco.
Yes.
Mr. Gentile.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski.
Yes.
Chairperson Hoak.
Yes. Ms. Chiketti, will you call the first matter on the calendar for this evening's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, perhaps an indication of the approval of the minutes?
The August 16, 2023 minutes have been approved.
Okay.
Ms. Chiketti, will you go ahead and call the first matter on the agenda for this evening?
Appeal by Bradley Hayes for variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2033 Morrow Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district to maintain a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit allowed in the side yard. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, two-foot fence height variance is required. Eighteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
Will the applicant please come forward? Hi, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Of course. My name is Bradley Hayes. I live at 2033 Morrow Avenue in Niskuna.
Can you tell us a little bit about the need for your variance and what steps you've taken to try to mitigate the need for variance?
Sure. So we purchased the house in November of 2016. At that time, the fence was installed. We were, at that time, also unaware of the ordinance, not that that is an excuse, but unaware of the ordinance that it needed to be a four-foot fence. We've simply maintained that fence until the present, where back in, I believe it was either late April or early May, our neighbors sought to replace the fencing on the side yard that adjoins our fence. Their address is 2044 Morrow Avenue. And at that time, they realized that the six-foot privacy fence on their side that had also been previously installed before they arrived and before we had purchased the house also violated this rule, part of the six-foot privacy fence extended into the side yard. And I believe at some point in time in that process, because they also applied for a variance, the home inspector came out to see where, in fact, the line of the back of the house should be, and that is when we received notice that we were in violation. So we are, of course, requesting to maintain the existing fence. In terms of steps that we have taken, you know, for, you know, kind of mitigating the violation, we've taken no other steps other than, you know, keeping the existing fence and seeing if we can continue to keep the fence in place.
Mr. Hayes, can I just stop you for a second?
Sure.
Laura, can you put up the diagram that's included in the application?
I have to do it this weird way because my computer is still updating, so I apologize. It's not going to be, until my computer gets up and running, it's not going to be a way to think it's up here anymore.
That is a picture of my dog, Nala.
What kind of dog is Nala?
Nala is actually a part, it's a mix. She's part German Shepherd and part Staffordshire Terrier. It's a strange mix. Very athletic dog. It's actually one of the reasons why we are seeking to maintain the fence at its current size. She's an extremely athletic dog. She sort of looks like one of those agility dogs, and she has that sort of athleticism. And we, she's also a very social dog. We have some concern that if it's a four-foot fence, she will be able to hop the fence, especially in the winter time with the snow pack, but.
Mr. Hayes, just have a couple of questions for you. The dotted line represents where the six-foot fence currently stands, correct? Your neighbor, who would be to your right, looking at your home, correct?
Correct.
He's the individual that you were discussing that had previously applied for variance?
Correct.
Okay, and I, my understanding is, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, that variance was denied, correct?
Denied.
Okay, so he was unable to maintain a six-foot fence running perpendicular to your dotted line along your property boundary, okay?
Yes.
So there currently, is there currently a fence there?
There is currently a fence there.
Okay, and what is the height of that fence?
The, so they have installed a front-facing, which is like a four-foot fence.
So there's a four-foot fence running along there?
Well, and then I don't believe they've actually replaced that line of fence yet. They have the materials. I think they're in process, but the existing fence has not yet come down to the side.
Okay, but it's our understanding that that fence will be removed. The six-foot fence will be removed.
Yeah.
And it's your understanding that that fence will be replaced with a four-foot fence, correct?
That is correct.
And you would agree that if you replaced the dotted line with a four-foot fence, you would be in compliance?
Correct.
Okay, so you have that option, that's a feasible option for you.
It is a feasible option.
Okay, and you also would agree, and if you're looking at the package that you submitted, you submitted some photographs, I believe, of other properties, correct, with fences?
Yes, there are, as you all are probably very familiar, more so than I, this, it is very common in Old Niskuna and in other neighborhoods to see fencing that is six-foot in the front or the side of the.
Right, so I guess I'm just trying to direct your attention to your appendix B, which has a whole, what appears to be a series of pictures
Yeah.
that I assume that you are providing as comparators, correct?
I am, and the reason for that is about the character of the neighborhood question. One of the questions that you pose in your document is, you know, what is the effect, essentially, of the variance? Will it disturb the character of the neighborhood? And I included these to demonstrate that, in fact, this, our fence is very similar to fences that you will find throughout Niskuna and particularly in Old Niskuna.
Well, I understand that, but I think that in one respect, it's different because all of the photographs that you have provided, the fencing question runs from the back corner of the property, not the front corner of the property. You would agree with that?
I understand what you're saying. Nevertheless, some of them are, are.
I mean, that's the back corner, right?
I, well, that one may be, but there are many that are not from the back corner of the house. I mean, it's a fairly common thing to see. And so, yes, I noted that there is a difference there.
So you also would have another opportunity, that you would have the option potentially to move it to the back corner of your property and still be in compliance as well. So there's two other options, and I appreciate that you don't want to do that because that would incur a cost to you to do that, right?
That is correct, yeah.
But the concerns that you have with respect to the animals would be ameliorated if you move the fence back, and in fact, if you move the fence back, you could install a six-foot fence that could link up with other six-foot fence, so you wouldn't have to deal with a four-foot fence on the side of your house, right?
That is correct.
So you wouldn't, you would, that would actually further ameliorate or further address the issue with the, your dogs?
Yes, at significant cost, as you mentioned.
I understand the cost is an issue for it. Okay, is there anybody else that has any questions?
I have one. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Inquiring minds would wish to know how much? Did you have an opportunity to speak with a contractor or other appropriate person to find out how much?
So I looked at the pricing of the raw materials. So in that sense, the price for similar fencing at four feet rather than six feet came to about, I think it was about $880 with the panels, posts, and also digging tools. I added that in there, so that was the rough.
Thank you. And may I follow up?
Of course, please.
Did you have an opportunity to obtain an estimate from a contractor or appropriate person if hypothetically you were to incur the cost of removing the fence where it's currently located and installing a six-foot fence starting at the rear right corner of your home?
I did not get an estimate.
Do you have a reasonable basis to provide us with an estimate?
No, in fairness, I don't want to make up a number. I don't think that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Yes, Chairman, I actually have a question for our team here. If you could show the kind of site overview from kind of a map view showing both his house and the neighbor's house where the neighbor did not get the variance. So I'm just curious to kind of understand the limit of the neighbor's six-foot fence that they have replaced, and I'll mention that I did drive by the property today to look at that, and I could see the neighbor's fence where they've replaced it. You can see the new parts. The back corner of their house, does it seem to be, and this is a question I don't know that we can answer here, is it similar to the back corner of his house? Is there any way for us to determine that?
You mean like in distance to the street?
I mean in distance to where the six-foot fence that the neighbor owns ends. Where their six-foot fence starts, based on where the back corner of their house is, may be further to the, closer to the property line and not matching the back.
Yeah, I think I understand Ms. Pacheco's question. Why don't you just post that to the applicant if he has an answer to that?
Do you know if the back of your house and the back of your neighbor's house are aligned?
They are not perfectly aligned. And may I ask a question? So you can see, may I approach the screen for a second?
I think we want you to grab the microphone.
So we have a record of it, please?
Thank you. So this is the back of the garage and mudroom that is off the garage. The house then continues in this space. This would be the area where the fence could be six feet? Is that correct, the frontmost back?
Yes.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to, so you can see here, I mean, it's hard to say, of course, this is their corner, our corner is up here, so they don't perfectly align. They're off by several feet, but it, you know, they're not wildly off, but they don't perfectly align.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. I think the purpose of my question is to understand that if, for example, we suggested, as some of my colleagues have, that you have either the current fence relocated or a new six-foot fence put up at the back corner of your house, it would either overlap their six-foot piece, I think, or there could be some entertaining of not having it exactly at the back corner of your house. I'm just, I'm trying to give you opportunities to think about maybe amending your application to take these other solutions into account.
Okay, thank you.
So do you understand what Ms. Pacheco is suggesting to you?
What I believe she's suggesting is if we, if, in moving it back, there could be alignment issues with the neighbor's.
Right, and I think the line of question is, would it benefit you to amend your application, which you're under no obligation to do, to see if you could make sure, if you were granted a smaller variance so that the, your six-foot fence moved back lined up with your neighbor's existing six-foot portion, you know, so there wouldn't be a gap?
Right.
Even if that resulted in it not being perfectly aligned with the back corner of your property, which you would need a variance for?
Okay, and I appreciate that opportunity. My primary motivation here is in avoiding the not insignificant cost. I want to be very frank with you all about that, something that we inherited and that, you know, it, it is a lot of money for a little gain, as far as we are concerned, and something that, you know, will affect things of landscaping and the like. We have, right behind the privacy fences, there are, you know, carved-out kind of garden plots with shrubberies and the like. Those will have to be changed in a number of ways, because obviously, they're designed now to line up against the fence. The, obviously, and then the costs associated with the fence itself. So there are a number of different things that maintaining kind of the existing space as it is, is quite beneficial to us, and, you know, to Mr. Green's question about cost, all of those other things would then factor in too, because it will be quite the eyesore when we initially move it. You know, obviously, over time, we can, you know, change the landscaping, but that will take time.
Okay, one further question along this line. When the neighbor does replace the six-foot fence with the four-foot fence in the area where he was not granted variance, what will you do to stop your dog from jumping over?
Yeah, no, it's a good question, and what I'm more concerned with, the, you know, Nala is the dog, and she's not, I'm not terribly worried about her bolting generally without, like, a stimulant. She runs into neighborhood dogs all the time on her walks, enjoys socializing. It's very different looking out front than to the side. You know, just doesn't have the same interest in the side yard as she does in what's going out front. So that's in some ways the difference there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. You said you bought the house in November 2016.
Correct.
And the fence was there.
Correct.
And do you have any idea how long the fence has been in there?
No, so I went back through, you can look at the Google Maps history.
Yes.
And the previous snapshot from the street was 2011, and that fence is not installed.
2011.
2011. So sometime between 2011 and the summer of 2016, when we first saw the house, that was installed. It seems new-ish, but the landscaping didn't seem that fresh when we purchased the house around there.
Is that fence PVC or?
Yes.
Okay, and is the top of it, you could see through it?
Yes, you can, so it.
How, how, how long is the top of where you could see through?
So it's opaque to 47 inches, so just under four feet, and then it is, you know, slated or spindled, I'm not quite sure what the verbiage is, above that. So the sightline is sort of intact, it's not opaque all the way up to six.
So is the top a part of the whole piece of the fence? Or is, could it be taken off? I'm trying to figure a way for you to eliminate, because it looks like to me you might be able to just eliminate the top
Yeah.
without removing the fence.
So so it does, it's, I think maybe you could, I don't really know.
That's what I'm saying, because you're going to have four feet on the side anyway, so it really doesn't matter to have a six feet or four feet anymore because of the situation of the neighbor.
Right.
So for you, if you're just able to hire, there's many companies, or you could do it yourself, just because the top is not really like the fence in the bottom, you know?
Ms., if I just may interject.
So you could, you could put a, make it into four feet, it sounds like 47 inches is the bottom of it. And then I have another question, but I'll let Mr. Hoak see what he has.
I just wanted to point out, Mr. Latif, the appendix C, and give the opportunity to the applicant to correct on his application, has a measurement of what the height of the fence up to where the slats begin.
Right, Mr. Chairman, not to point out, but even if it is on an appendix, I like to put it on the record by asking the applicant the question.
Sure, I'm not, I'm not, I just wanted to make sure that we had, that you were aware that that's in the.
A lot of times, just to the applicant, we have stuff on paper, we like to ask the question, so we put it on record, because if we don't ask you, it's on paper.
Understood, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for pointing what you pointed out.
Mr. Latif, if you have a follow-up question, you had an additional question?
Yes, if you don't mind, on the side of your garage, do you have a door in there, and how far is that door from the fence?
It is probably three to four feet away from the fence.
Three to four feet away? So is that your access to the backyard, or do you have another door?
We have a sliding glass door in the back that leads to a deck that then has stairs into the backyard.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Is there anyone else with any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Green.
Did you have an opportunity to speak with your neighbors directly across the street who, when looking out of their home, see the fence as it is, as it currently exists?
Yes.
And would you be gracious enough to share in sum and substance the conversation?
He did not share with me any objections to the existing fence. You know, there was some eye-rolling about the whole episode, but, but, you know, I also admit that he was talking to the person most affected, so, but, no, that, everyone seems surprised to learn of this and sympathetic to why we're seeking the variance.
Have you, if I may, did you have an opportunity to speak with the neighbors immediately to your right as you faced the front of the house?
I have.
And would you be gracious enough to share with us the sum and substance of that conversation or conversations?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that, that, one, they are supportive of seeking the variance, and I think they feel bad that this sort of started with them seeking the permit in the first place, and them seeking, in many ways, to do what was right. My sense of the universe is that some people do not seek permits when they put up fencing wrongly. They did the right thing, and as a consequence, their neighbors, you know, may be adversely affected. So in that sense, they've expressed a lot of regret about being, us being in the situation, and are then very supportive of maintaining the existing fence.
And if I may follow up with a little bit different line? And I say this with all humility and love for pets, but why is, is there a difference? As I believe you were explaining, with the dog being more engaged with people in the front than they would be perhaps to the front and a little bit to the dog's left?
Yeah.
Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I think it's just there, I mean, this, I apologize, this is almost a little silly, but, you know, dogs have really good friends, right? Other doggy friends that they get particularly excited about. There are some dogs that walk by and, like, you know, the dog is at the window, will bark, other dogs will walk by, there's no noise, but it's like, oh, there's my friend, I want to go out and play, gets really excited to see some of her friends, or, you know, there's a Newfoundland at the end of the street, around the corner, a golden retriever that she really likes to play with, that's all. So there are some that are just, you know, more popular in her world than others.
Very good, thanks for that additional piece of information for me.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, I guess this is for legal, please? If a variance is granted for the current fence, does that carry on to future replacements of said fence on and on forever and ever?
Yes.
I would thank you for the clarification.
Is, I would be happy to stipulate that this would be a variance for this fence only, if that would help mitigate that, because I understand that this is, that this was wrongly installed. I'm, you know, I do understand that, but, you know, we're sort of left holding the bag, and so any future alterations, we would be happy to.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something that can even be conditioned to support, I defer to Owen on that.
I honestly don't know the answer to that without looking into it, because I know by operation of law, typically, once a variance is granted, it runs with the land, so whether or not that's a legal stipulation that can actually be upheld, I wouldn't know without looking into it.
It's very difficult to enforce. Okay, well, we don't have an answer for that this evening. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Chairman, just a couple more questions. I want to understand from you, as applicant, if the variance was not granted, what would need to happen, and perhaps this is a question for Laura, if the variance was not granted, what actions would need to be taken?
So the owner would have the choice to bring the fence down to four feet, it'd be compliant in the side yard at four feet, or they can move the fence to the rear corner of their house and maintain it at six feet.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure the applicant understood, you know, whether, whatever way it goes in this discussion, what your options are.
Thank you.
Did you want to amend your application at this time?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I have just one quick question. If you were to move that six-foot fence back to the rear corner, as has been discussed, would that expose a door?
Yes, it would.
Okay, and what's in front of that door today?
In front of it?
Like, is there a patio or a little walkway?
There is a little concrete slab that runs sort of the length of the garage area, and so, like, where we keep our trash cans and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions? Does the applicant have anything else to offer?
I believe that's everything. I appreciate all of your time.
Is there anybody from the community that wants to be heard, either for or against this application? Having heard no further comments from the community, is there anyone on the board who wishes to make a motion?
Always the worst, I was always terrible at this. Motion to approve the variance.
Mr. Gentile, so you're moving to approve the variance? Could you state the reasons why you wish to approve the variance?
Motion to approve the variance based on the fence as an existing condition at the time of his purchase of the house, and based on the lack of negative responses coming from the outreach to the community.
Okay, a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Chiketti, will you call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
This is a tough situation, but for me, again, I don't want to set the precedent to have a fence in the front, and I know the applicant, it's not his fault that the fence was there. Again, we have other people applying for fences, and not because somebody already put that fence in there, so we have to allow. already put that fence in there, so we have to allow some people to have the fence in front and set precedent, so my vote is no.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm going to vote yes for the following reasons, um, while I do think that the benefit that was requested regarding, or that is applied for regarding the dog, eh, not only can it be achieved by other means, but might not be achieved by the variance. I do think the benefit of cost avoidance can be achieved. I, I do not find this to be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I'm familiar with that neighborhood, I cycle past your house all the time. Um, and in fact, I think that based on what is behind the fence today, that moving the fence eh might in itself be an undesirable change. This is absolutely a substantial variance, we have held that consistently with anything eh regarding this eh, this code. Eh, I don't see any reason to have an adverse environmental impact, um, considering it is no environmental impact, so leave it where it is. And this is one of the rare cases where this does not seem to be self-created, eh, where that is not determinative. Eh, I do find on the balance that eh the variance should be approved.
Ms, Ms. Pacheco?
I'm gonna vote no, eh, similar to my colleague, Mr. Latif, eh, where I believe that there are other means by which you can bring the fence into compliance eh as was discussed. Eh, it is undesirable in my mind eh in the neighborhood character, as there are not other residences on that stretch, on that block that I observed when I drove through the neighborhood eh today that have six-foot fences in the front yard. Again, we've talked about whether they are attached at the back or the front, eh, it is substantial. Eh, it, it does not have environmental eh or adverse environmental effects sitting there, but I think the means can be achieved in another way. Eh, that's my reason for voting no.
Mr. Gentile?
I am going to vote no for the reasons stated and eh permanent nature of the variance.
Mr. Green?
This is a tough one, I, I actually sympathize with you, um. However, eh that said, for the reasons stated by eh eh, Mr. Latif and Ms. Pacheco, I'm constrained eh to vote no.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm gonna vote no, um, for the reasons stated by various board members. Eh, I do believe there's a, there's alternatives to um achieving of the same means, I do believe that eh it is substantial, and I do believe it's an undesirable change to the neighborhood, it's disruptive. As evidenced by your neighbor's eh four-foot fence in that same area.
Chairperson Hoek.
Mr. Hayes, I, I, I wanna eh thank you for coming forward eh, and I, I find that you've been very candid tonight. And we, we appreciate this board, we appreciate that, I also appreciate the eh completeness of your application. It does eh assist us in evaluating the applications, and, you know, I eh akin to what Mr. Green said, I, I'm sympathetic to your situation, I'm sympathetic to the costs associated with having to move the fence. So none of those are factors that I, I don't take heavily in evaluating my decision. Um, that being said, we have eh, and, and you as the applicant don't have the benefit of seeing what we see every every meeting, which are eh a consistent flow of six-foot fences. So there is a desire eh, at least on my part, to maintain some consistency with similar situations. In your particular circumstances, um, I do believe that there, there are other feasible eh means in which we can accomplish the same goals eh albeit a- at some cost. Um, but that's not necessarily unique to your particular situation, because a lot of times in these variances, when individuals come for variances, there are eh a negative determination is gonna result in some cost to the applicant. Um, with respect to an undesirable change in the neighborhood, the, the code itself has provisions precluding six-foot fences, um, I think that um that in and of itself eh establishes a preference that six-foot fences in the front yard um eh creates an undesirable change in the neighborhood. So, um, and, and your particular six-foot fence, you know, although it's attractive overall, it's still in the front yard and it's still um i- is violative of, you know, that, that preference that the town has put forward in the code. Um, and I don't think there's any basis or reason um that, that your particular fence would, would not um, would not create an undesirable change in the neighborhood for the reasons that we spoke about tonight. The variance is substantial, um, I don't believe the variance would have adverse environmental effects in the neighborhood, and although eh, i- in your particular circumstances, since the fence was there, I don't think um it was necessarily self-created, although many of these eh six-foot fence applications are self-created in the sense that the applicant has a choice whether or not to install the six-foot fence, your six-foot fence is already there, so I, I don't think that um, it is a situation where eh we would, would eh, th- this is in any way self-created. But balancing those factors in a very long-winded way, um, I get to the same conclusion eh as my colleagues. Um, and must eh vote against the application to approve, so unfortunately, sir, um, your eh variance has been denied by a vote of eh six to one. Or the application to approve your variance has been denied by a eh vote of one to six. So, I'm sorry, sir. Commissioner Kenny, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Matthew Convoy for a variance from section two twenty dash four, section two twenty dash eighteen A two, and section two twenty dash twenty-five B one A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property eighteen fifty-four Union Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-one low-density residential zoning district. The denial is to maintain a garage which would be located in the front yard after the proposed lot line allowed, wait a minute. After the proposed l- lot line adjustment with nineteen hundred Union Street, and to main a six, re- maintain a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit allowed in the front yard after the proposed lot line adjustment with nineteen hundred Union Street. Section two twenty dash four defines through lots as having two frontages. As proposed, the lot line adjustment will result in eighteen fifty-four Union Street becoming a through lot as it is oriented between Union Street and New York State Route seven. Section two twenty dash eighteen A two states that accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. After the lot line adjustment, the garage, which would be located in the front yard between the house and New York State Route seven, therefore, a variance from this section is required. Section two twenty-five, two twenty dash twenty-five B one A states that for fences located in the front yard and side yard, the maximum height for fencing is four feet. After the lot line adjustment, the six-foot fence, high fence would be located in the front yard between the house and New York State Route seven, therefore, a two-foot fence height variance from that section is required. Five notices were mailed, zero responses, and the packets include the planning board recommendation.
I mean, um, we normally read the planning board rec- recommendations to the record.
What's that?
We normally read the planning board recommendations to the record, even if it's in the packet.
I, I was waiting for.
Okay, okay, sorry, when she said it was in the packet, I thought that meant that we weren't gonna read it, um. Okay, so on September eleventh, the planning board reviewed the appeal by Glenn Foreman and Matthew Convoy and made the following recommendations. Effect on the comprehensive plan, the planning board voted seven-zero that the proposed area variances had no effect on the comprehensive plan. They noted the property use is not changing, and the garage and fence already exist on the property. Suitability of use, the planning board voted seven-zero that the proposed variances are suitable for the area, they offered the following statements in support of the decision. The adjusted lot will be consistent with town code guidelines while having no impact on the neighbors. The board does not consider this precedent-setting decision because this particular lot at eighteen fifty-four Union Street is unique with frontages on Union Street and Route seven. The portion of both lots that front Route seven are heavily wooded, thereby providing a nice visual and sound buffer to the arterial which is not expected to change. The proposed action will result in lots that are more regularly shaped, which is a goal of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Foreman's property will change from a six-sided property to a more rectangular four-sided lot. This is the best choice of the available alternatives. An alternative action that was considered results in a thin strip of land of the nineteen hundred Union Street lot, fronting the entire length of two lots along Route seven. This would result in irregular-shaped lots and is counter to the goals described in the comprehensive plan. The board eh recommendation, the board voted seven-zero to recommend the ZBIA grant the variances.
Thank you, will the applicant come forward, please? Good evening, sir, will you state your eh name and address for the record?
George, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Matt Convoy, um, my address is one eight five four Union Street, Niskuna.
Um, will you tell us a little bit about your, actually, before you do that, can you put up the eh map with the lot lines? Yeah, that's the, that's the exi- that's the proposed.
That's, yep.
The, okay, yeah, that's the one.
Existing and the yellow is proposed.
Okay, so, eh, I'm sorry, Mr. Convoy, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about your application? The need for the variances and what steps, if any, you've taken to mitigate the need for the variances?
Sure, absolutely, so, um, so, um, Mr. Foreman actually is eh planning on eh selling his property and offered me the opportunity to buy a portion of his property to expand the size of mine. Um, and in doing that, I would get eh slightly more frontage on Union Street, which is closer to his house, and then eh that would provide a second driveway for me. And then it would provide all the land that is behind my house that currently is owned by Mr. Foreman. Eh, so when I had the opportunity to do that, eh, I thought it was a great opportunity cuz I have three little kids and having a little more room and eh yard for them to play in would be pretty awesome for three boys. Um, when Mr. Foreman and I put in the application for the lot line movable, it was brought up that we would have these two frontages um by the letter of the code and that we would require variances because of changes in the way the lot would then be. Um, so some things that we kind of attempted to mitigate the need to come to a zoning board of appeals. Eh, we discussed what actually was two frontages and what that meant to the town. Being that the eh Route seven is, the section of Route seven that is behind our houses is the crosstown arterial, and by New York State law, there's no right-of-way, it's a controlled access road. So we can't ever put a driveway there, um, and because of that, it doesn't make sense to Mr. Foreman or I that this is actually two fronts or frontages, um, because I never actually had the ability to convert this into my front yard. Um, and in discussion with the planning board, that was something that they felt needed to come to the zoning board for discussion of further eh maybe evaluation of what the, the definition was, and if not, then there would be variances. Um, the garage that's in the back of my property currently is just a two-car garage that's standalone. Um, and has been there for, I don't know how long, it was, I bought the property in May of two thousand twenty-two, and it was there for people before me and the people before them. And then the other aspect is the, there's a fence that is six feet in nature. It's probably a hundred-foot section, it runs between the eighteen fifty church and the backyard of eh my house. Um, and it's just a small wood plank section of fence to block the parking lot slash daycare play yard from our backyard.
Okay, so, Mr. Convoy, before you, eh, I guess I have a question.
Yep.
Under what, why, eh Laura, is eh Route seven considered a front yard?
Um, because our code um actually just says frontage on a street, like, it can be a paper street, it can be a limited-access highway, it could be a regular-built eh improved road. It doesn't distinguish between the type of frontage, so the ability to put in a driveway or use the frontage doesn't carve out in my interpretation, the use of a frontage, I can read you guys the definition or bring it up if you want to see.
Yeah, could you please?
So, so while you're doing that, so it's my understanding then that there is no rear yard on this property as proposed?
Wait, so I'm just currently, if I, sorry, I'm, my computer is almost ready to come up, but currently, the two lots exist like this, so this um blue line is Mr. Foreman, he's sitting in the audience. Um, his lot currently has frontage on Union Street and on Route seven. And this pink lot is Mr. Convoy's, he, his lot currently doesn't touch Route seven. But the lot line adjustment, which would allow for him to have room for his family and allow for him to have a horseshoe driveway, which most um of these properties on Union Street in this area do have, um, would create eh frontage on Union Street and on Route seven. So the yellow part would become the same as the pink part.
So I gue- I guess the, Laura, from my perspective, the, the question that I was asking, or the reason I was asking, is there any basis for an interpretation by this board that Route seven does not constitute a front yard?
Yeah, I, I think that they would p- like for you guys to make that interpretation, um. Because I know that Mr. Convoy in the future would potentially wanna add a pool, so if he creates two front yards, you'd have to come back for the um.
So I, I guess, again, um.
So I'll read you the definition here, hold on.
All right.
Sorry, I should've put that in the packet.
So while she's calling up, five minutes.
Well, can you just hold on, I just wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to hear the definition.
Yeah, so our definition of front or frontage is the length of any lot line or building which abuts an existing or proposed street right-of-way. Corner lots and through lots have two fronts or frontages, and that was um added in nineteen ninety-five.
I mean, eh, okay. I'm sorry, what did you wanna say, Mr. Convoy?
So I was just gonna say that, you know, by, if we're able to get an interpretation that is different from the planning board, then I won't have to kind of be a frequent visitor to the zoning board.
No, I, I appreciate that, but I guess eh from my perspective, and I'll, I'll open it up for discussion eh on the board. Eh, but for my, my eh, my concern with that is the definition seems pretty clear, and there is a, a method to amend the code that our, our board does not amend the code, we can interpret the code, but we can't amend it. Um, and to me, the section is, is clear and unambiguous on its face, so I d- I don't know what authority we have to just reinterpret a clear and ambiguous portion of the code. Elena, I don't know if you wanna weigh in on that.
I mean, my position is that you don't have the ability to interpret it if there's not any vagueness to it. Um, but the board can certainly make a recommendation. Um, you know, Laura and I are always discussing potential changes to the code, the zoning code's a little bit more complicated to change than the standard code, but it's not that it can't be done, so, you know, if there's um a recommendation to be made, that can always be taken into consideration for future, because I do understand the concern here, but.
Okay, well, let me just open it up, does anybody else on the board wish to discuss this particular issue as to the reinterpret, or the interpretation of the existing code? So that um a, a variance theoretically wouldn't be necessary, given the eh town attorney's perspective and position in the matter, is there anybody who wishes to discuss this?
Um, Mr. Chairman, so it is clearly not our eh role to amend code. However, we do grant variances and exceptions to the code. Um, so that would be, I think, within our purview eh to do, which is, you know, why we exist.
Sir, I, I mean, Mr. Dolman, I, 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 I'm just, I, I, I don't disagree with anything you said. I'm just limiting our conversation at this point to that issue, since it was raised by the planning board. The planning board kind of eh requested, or eh that we we, we, we think about that issue, and um I've, I've said my position on it, the town attorney said eh her position. Wanted to just make sure that there was no board member that had a different position, and if, if, having heard none, um, I'm more than willing to go on and do our traditional analysis of eh the variance eh application um that is before us. Um, so with, with that being said, getting back to the two var- there's two variances, correct? The two variances that are pending, um, one of the options you would have, a feasible alternative you would have is to do the lot line adjustment so that the back portion of your lot is cut off, so that you don't have any frontage on that road, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And what the planning board said, I believe, is that that would result in an irregular-shaped lot and would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan, I believe that's their. and would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan. I believe that's their position, right? But that is a feasible alternative to not then require the variances.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, but it would also, at the same time, be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and be counterproductive from the, the planning board's perspective?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the, the garage and the, the fence, they're pre-existing. There's no changes. This is just a paper lot line adjustment, correct?
Yes, it would just be the, the change of the property lot lines at this time.
All right, I don't have anything further. Does anybody else have any other further questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions.
Mr. Latif?
Tell me, tell me about the existing property. So, in your backyard, what do you have in the backyard there?
In the backyard currently?
Yes.
Then immediately behind the house is the garage that can be seen slightly on the map there.
Okay.
The pink line that's to the right side of the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Probably the back, maybe quarter of that line is the six-foot fence, which runs up into, it runs about perpendicular to where the, uh, the church's parking lot ends.
And you moved in in 2022, you said?
Yes, that's correct.
And Laura, is this garage, did we have a permit for the existing garage? And did we have the setback because the other owner owned that property back? Did, did we have all that?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of the properties on Union Street are pre-existing in the 1970s.
Right.
But everything that currently exists on the property is legally conforming. But what makes it change is that the lot line would shift up to Route 7.
So, so everything on his property was legit? The only thing, because he bought a lot and expanded his lot, it became a frontage because of Route 7?
Well, the purchase hasn't proceeded because the planning board can't approve a lot line adjustment without the zoning board's review of the case.
The purchase has not happened.
Correct.
The purchase is pending, the zoning board's variance.
Okay. So the question I have, can you keep that lot separate from yours? You can have two lots or not?
Could we keep?
Can you have two lots if you buy this lot, or does it have to be part of yours?
So there, there is a way for us to have it separate, where it would be like a subdivision of Mr. Foreman's property. But the, kind of the easier route, it seemed like, was to do a lot line moveal of where my lines were.
Okay, because usually we have the opposite come in front of us, people, you know, separating.
Yeah.
And they want to build something else on, on the second part.
Right, and in order for us to keep as two separate lots, it would be a subdivision of Mr. Foreman's property rather than the, the lot line moveal.
Okay.
We were trying to avoid that because it seemed like a little bit more of a complex process than the application for a lot line moveal.
A subdivision would also require an area variance?
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, because the frontage that's showing for the yellow property wouldn't meet the zoning requirement. And like, as, right now, the pink lot, 1854, it should have 100 feet, but it doesn't quite have 100 feet. It's like 80 or something like that. So in terms of frontage on Union Street, getting more land actually brings that lot more in conformance with the R1 zoning district. But if you were deceptified, it would still need area variances.
Okay, yeah, it was just concerned because I know we had other properties came in front of us on Route 7. I just wasn't sure if to keep it two or not. But it looks like you looked into this options and that's your best option right here.
Yeah, Mr. Foreman's been like quite, you know, convincing of whatever. He does his due diligence in his research and making sure that he's spoken with the right people and has looked at all opportunities and angles about what is best for both myself and Mr. Foreman with the moveal, but what looks best for the town.
So if you were to purchase this?
Yep.
You already looked into, so you can't have a driveway to Route 7?
Correct.
Right? And Laura, I live on Route 7, but far away from this. And so why is this area, they can't have a driveway compared to down by Bellevue and so on?
So Glenn could certainly come and explain that as just as well as I can. He did a lot of deed research, which he provided to myself and Elena, which I read through a lot. And essentially what happened was, the state came in and did takings. I'm just going to zoom out a little bit on this. This, do you see, do you see this triangle up here?
Yep.
Um, this is probably all one parcel at one point, the blue. And then the state came in and did takings of the properties all along here. And so Route 7 bent and went through these properties, and the state came through and did a taking. And it's written into their deeds, which we do have copies of, that they are not allowed to access that property and it's categorized by New York State as a limited access highway. So it's almost like you're on the Northway at that point. They definitely, I can confirm, would never, ever allow a driveway through there. It's written right into their deeds.
It's written to the deeds and it's only that portion.
It's actually, it starts from here and it goes all the way to past the city of Schenectady lot line. It, but yeah, then I think it becomes, it resumes kind of like the normal Route 7 that you're used to.
Does this pass through Balltown Road?
Um, no, because this is like the intersection of Route 7 with Rosendale and Union. And so it goes from Route 7 here, like, if you think about it, like past.
Goes out to 890.
Yeah, goes out to 890.
890?
Yeah, yeah. I believe, though, that the probably, the limited access portion sort of stops when you get that light, when you hit the city of Schenectady.
Okay, all right, thank you, Laura.
But yeah, it's different than the most of the section.
Interesting. Thank you. No further questions.
Does anybody else have any further questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Just to get it on the record, a little bit of the lay of the land. Right now, you've got one driveway, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, and you have to back out into a four-lane road?
So behind the house currently, there is a kind of a circle driveway to prevent that. But the intent would be if we were able to have this, I would make a horseshoe driveway and then break out the driveway in the backyard so my kids have grass to play on and not driveway.
Very good. And the houses to your right and to your left, do they have double driveways?
So the house that is to my right, which is 1850, that is a Lutheran church. So they have a triple or double driveway, yes. They have a double driveway.
So the answer is yes.
And then Mr. Foreman has double driveway and will maintain double, double driveway even if he sells me one of his because he has a triple driveway.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, sir.
All right, and it's your intention, should your application be granted, to likewise have a similar type of driveway configuration as your neighbor church and your neighbor to your left?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Green, anything further?
I'm thinking. I'm good.
Does anybody else have any further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dolman. Are you a writer? Because I got to tell you, this is like the most narrative-written application I, I think I've ever read. This is incredibly well-crafted.
Thank you. It was mostly Mr. Foreman's hearings. So I'll let him speak on his background.
Some, I was like, oh, wow, this reads like a book.
Higher education, so.
Okay. That, that's my only question.
Thank you, Mr. Dolman.
Anybody else with any other questions or comments? No? Having, Mr. Foreman, would you like to be heard? Sure, come on forward. Could you just state your address for the record, please?
Sure, Glenn Foreman, 1900 Union Street. Can I point to the map for a minute?
Sure. Can you, can you grab a microphone now? Just so we can keep a record of your comments.
So I bought this property back in 1986, my wife and I. And the Parente family owned this and offered that to me as well. And when you're in my backyard, I'm looking at the forest here. And so we've kept that. So to the point, it is inaccessible. But if you have this much forest here, it just looks nice to have that as forest. So I don't even get firewood over there. So I just wanted to point that out, that Laura's right. From St. David's Lane, you know, to 890, this limited access highway has no, no deeded access. All their deeds were written the same way. There was a comment about Dover having a shed. But, you know, none of these have the right of abutting properties to access the highway. And when I spoke to the DOT about this, they certainly agreed that it was unwise to attract their attention to a possible safety or traffic problem of opening a driveway on Route 7. But it's really the crosstown highway artery which, artery that would be, arterial that would be affected by any changes. And they do route Balltown Road South across Union Street, which increased the traffic. And they did that, it's not something the town controls on Union Street or Balltown Road. They, they did that to prevent left turns and to free up that short Balltown Road. Nicholas, you mentioned that Balltown Road thing. So they're trying to keep things to a minimum of difficulty. Can I give this back to you? I feel like I'm on the stage.
Mr. Foreman, I just have a quick question for you. How do you access that parcel across on the other side of Route 7, yeah?
Oh, I, I can't access it.
So you could just, okay.
However, it's probably worth noting that when, that when 1909 was developed, it's a bit of a sourced, assorted story because the owner at, next door at 1917, put the telephone pole on my property and got it all hooked up. And when I saw it, I had to challenge it and have it removed because that was, you know, on paper. But they, they wanted that property and then they decided not, not to get it. And then there's just a lot of stories about the end of Dover Road into that property I bore you with. But I'd like it to stay mature trees. I do worry that trees will fall on other people's land, but no one's ever, in, in 38 years, no one's ever said, hey, your tree fell. And, you know, because I can't go to cut them down.
Right, thank you. I appreciate the response. We're just inquiring minds wanted to know here.
Yeah, it's, it's both a liability and a, and a pleasure. And I'd like to give it away if anybody would like to take ownership for it free of charge. It's, it's, you know, just, just woods. So, thank you. That's all.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, well, Mr. Foreman is present. Mr. Foreman, you and I met by, I will use the word serendipity. You were, as I was performing a site visit, mowing your lawn, correct?
Yes, and I offered Mr. Green the opportunity to walk back there and while he was going, to push the lawnmower back there as well.
We had a very civil discussion. You were a pleasure to speak with. But I want to state for the record and have you confirm that we did not speak about the substance of this application. And I invited you to be present here today, and here you are.
Yes, nope, no discussion on any of these matters took place. We talked about mowing and the exercise that it provides us.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Is there anyone in the community or the audience that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard none, is there anyone who would like to make a motion with respect to the two variances that are pending before the board? And if you make a motion, please indicate whether you're moving on one or both of the variance applications simultaneously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for both variances to be approved. That is the garage in the front yard, meaning along the arterial, and the six-foot-high fence being two foot higher than the four foot required in a front yard, still considering the arterial to be a front yard. I don't find that it can be achieved by any other feasible means. I don't think it's undesirable change to the character or nearby properties, which are similarly barred from doing anything along the arterial. While the request is substantial, because of the nature, the definition of frontage that we have to work with on this board, I, it's not going to prevent me from saying yes, from voting yes. The request is not going to have any adverse environmental or physical effects and it is really, in my mind, not self-created. This was the effect of the taking that was done by the New York State DOT when they routed Route 7 in this manner and they created these odd-shaped lots. And it is clear in my mind from the recommendation of the town planning board that this would be acceptable, so I vote yes.
A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Sir. Mr. Dolman?
I second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Mr. Chiketti, will you call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes and just want to applaud the applicant for explaining all the facts in front of us. Thank you.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes, for the reasons stated and thank you both for your stewardship of a very high-visibility part of the town.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, for the reasons stated. I just will also note that while the applicant has articulated another feasible alternative to reach the same goal, that would require a, a lot line that would be less desirable to the community as a whole and is disfavored by the planning board. With the other factors to be considered strongly mitigated in favor of the application, I vote yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
So it's unanimous, your variance, variances have been approved.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there anything else before the board this evening?
Can I actually just go back to the question that was posed with the first application?
Can you refresh my recollection as to that question?
Yes, the question that was posed was whether or not we could condition an area variance approval on the applicant agreeing that, specific to the fence, or I guess it could be a shed or anything essentially, but a timetable, right? Like, if, if we approve this one, then the next time it needs to be replaced, it'll become to be in compliance. And I did just a quick little search online to see if I could find anything on it. I didn't find anything on it, but my thought process is that we shouldn't do it. And the reason for that being is that there's criteria that this board has to consider and that criteria does not contain any factors of we feel bad for the applicant's situation. And that's essentially the reason that would, that we'd be granting. So my thought process is in going through those factors and determining, you know, is there any type of positive or negative impact on the neighborhood? And, you know, is there environmental impacts and is this self-created? If you make a determination in favor of the application on that, then that should run with the land. And if you make a determination that it shouldn't be granted based on those factors, then there shouldn't be a condition that, okay, well, we'll just accept it for this time period, essentially because we feel bad for the situation that the applicant's in. So after giving it some thought and just making sure that there wasn't anything out there that would negate my thought process, I just wanted to make this board aware that that would be my position going forward if that question were to be posed again.
So does anybody have any questions for Elena?
No, but I want to thank counsel for that clarification.
I, I appreciate it as well. Laura, you, is there any training that you want to make, any announcements relative to training?
Yeah, there is an October 20th training at Hudson Valley Community College. It's Friday. It's all day. You don't have to go all day, but I recommend that you go for at least two classes because that'll fulfill your needs for the year's training. And lunch is provided. I've gone a couple of times. Planning board loves it because apparently it's usually a very yummy lunch. But it has case law and it has ethics, I believe, this year. And interestingly, Tiny Homes is one of the classes. So if you guys are interested, please email me and I will sign you up. It's free for you. And town pays. And just let me know, October 20th, all day.
Is there a deadline to, or do you want to establish a deadline to get back to you? Sometimes that's.
Um, yeah, I, I actually, I mean, they'll let me squeeze people in right up until the. Um, yeah, I, I actually, I mean, they'll let me squeeze people in right up until the end, but if you could maybe do October, let's see, 20th, like, a week before, I think would be...
The Friday, October 13th?
Yeah, I'm, I'm bad with calendars.
That'd be Friday, October...
Oh, yes, the 13th, the 13th would be good.
But I'd like to add, you are very helpful with absolutely everything else.
Yeah, this is true.
Zoning board matters, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you, Laura. Um, all right, if there's nothing else before the board, uh, is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.